Thank you very much. There is still a lot of space this side. Can you please come up front? I know it's nice. It's nice. Because we are here to listen to yourselves. Thank you very much. There is still a lot of space this side. Can you please come up front? I know it's nice. Because we are here to listen to yourselves. Okay. Let me greet everyone present. I hope we are not leaving someone we should be recognizing. And if there is someone we are supposed to be recognizing, I'm sure we will be alerted to that.
We are from the Parliament of South Africa, Patjulali, in the National Assembly.
We are the Committee on Mineral Resources and Energy. On my far left, we have Honorable Malinga. Next to her, we have Honorable Madokwe. Next to Honorable Madokwe is Honorable Nkofu. Next to me, on my left, is Honorable Fulmarans. On my right is Honorable Zungula. At the end, we have Honorable Jafta. Lord Uteta Iyo is Mr. Luzipo. Has made a proposal of a new legislation. The upstream petroleum resources development bill. Then, as a committee, we decided that before we deliberate on the bill, we must first go out and hear the views of the people on the bill. What is their take on the proposal by the department? So for now, it's still proposals from the department, not from the committee. So we are here for you to tell us what is your view on the proposal. So for now, we don't have a view as a committee. Only when we have finalized the public hearings in all the provinces, we will then deliberate on the bill and then come up with our own proposals on what is contained on the bill. So please, I know in many places where we were going, people were asking us about what is contained in the bill. And I always give one answer. Don't want to see us inviting you in order to fight in front of you because as a committee, we represent different political parties. So if I were to give you an answer, it will be my opinion, not of the committee because the committee has not discussed the bill until we have heard from you. So it's not that we don't want, but we can't discuss, agree on something and then come back and hear people. We must first hear people. Based on many of the views that will be coming out, we can then go and discuss and come up with our own recommendations. Now, let me just recap, not in totality, because you must also be able to apply your mind without being influenced. Let me just recap some of the proposals that are being made by the Department of Mineral Resources and Energy. One of those proposals is that the bill is proposing a standalone legislation on petroleum provisions.
We are being oppressed these days and also because of the years. Yes, I mean years, I mean the age. For instance, if somebody is above thirty-five, that person should just forget about being employed, even if the person could excel in a given opportunity. But because of the age, that person is being set aside.
Mathematics and science are considered. What about ingondo yemvili?
What about natural knowledge?
This is also no... There's also no delegation from our areas to represent our people in parliament. Slovo, for instance, has no high school at all. There's only one primary school, which is also unlawful. And where truly do all the bills and the acts of this country... Who actually is supposed to be gaining from them? Responses and processes by our officials take too long. People are fed up. I do not know what is going to be with the next voting, but truly, if I can tell the government, please do pull up your socks. People are getting tired. Thank you.
Good people, let me say it from now. Let me beg you, don't lose an opportunity in front of you. We could have taken any place and go there. But we have chosen you. Now, not in a bad way, this is what I'm gonna say. Not in a bad way, take it because I'm trying to make something from... We need to write... Let me give you an example. We need to write that... I don't want to enter politics, voting or no voting, but we are here now to say you are making a law. Help us participate in the making of this law. Now, I'll expect someone who says, "We don't agree with the twenty percent that government is giving." Someone who says the bill must be specific on the employment of youth, as currently it is, is not saying anything about young people. Two, the bill must talk about the required skills that will feed the petroleum industry of our people. Otherwise, if we come and say, "We don't have this, we don't have that", it can't be written because what we are coming here is the law. Help us to make the law to even address these issues that you are complaining about. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be law. The risk then is that when you go to other areas, they will talk to the bill and the decision, the recommendations or the views they make, they become dominant views of the process. They bind you. And you say you were present, but that's not what was said. So I'm just pleading, not in a negative way. Let's make it a point that when we come out of here, we know, for instance, that... Do you agree, for instance, that there must be state-owned petroleum compound? If you say you agree, why do you agree with that? You don't agree, why do you don't agree on a petroleum compound? So I'm just trying so that... Which is why I said, "We don't close out people who would want to talk to the bill and say, 'I disagree with this clause, I agree with this', and so forth."
Chair, thank you very much. I'm from Solar and Energy Group Holdings. In fact, you have covered me on your later comment. As the Solar and Energy Group, we support the separation of the bill. And the reason why we support, we want focus on petroleum resources. Because we believe that when these two entities are separated, there will be focus on mining, there will be focus on petroleum resources. We understand, Chairperson, as you already said, that the majority of black people are strategically discriminated from participating in petroleum resources, mining, maritime industries and other industries that were formerly for the advantaged groups who were participating for some time. So the bill must take into account the introduction of black people into these industries by way of unbundling of services in order to allow black people in the mainstream of petroleum resources, mining and others for economic transformation. Because you will see from time to time, when there are tenders that are issued out, the requirements are so huge to an extent that the SMMEs could not participate in those industries. People who know, you find that you need eight GPE and so on. So those people that were previously advantaged, they continue to benefit at the expense of those who never benefited in the past. That is, the black people in majority. So if you unbundle those services, you allow those people who had no opportunity to participate, at least to be involved in the mainstream of those industries to an extent that they gain experience, they gain necessary qualifications and requirements so that they compete at the end at a higher level. So my main thing is the unbundling of services so that black people and those who were previously disadvantaged can participate in these industries. And also, the problem that we are experiencing is a turnaround time for approving applications and it's tedious process. For example, the Solar and Energy Group Holding applied for the wholesale license for petroleum last year. So it took a year for them to be approved. But we have not yet approved, it's still in the process. Yes, we are excited that it comes now from the minister. The minister has signed because we had to appeal and so on. It still is a process. So that process is very tedious. So these are the things that the bill should look at so that it makes easy for black people to apply and also the turnaround time of application, at least should not be extended. And also, lastly, I'm just emphasizing the unbundling of these services. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
What is the turnaround time that you are suggesting? Because I think it says fourteen days. What is the... Leave your experience of a year, we all know that one. But I'm saying in the bill, if I'm not mistaken, it suggests fourteen days turnaround time on the application. For instance, others says, "No, thirty days or whatever", but I just want to know, what are you suggesting should be a reasonable turnaround time?
No, in fact, fourteen days, Chair, is a right turnaround time. Yeah, but I'm talking on the experience that we have currently. Thank you. First point is a dignitized, state-owned company as an entity responsible for managing the state's interests and petroleum rights. With what I just read, I have a problem with that clause because there are a lot of the state-owned companies which do not do right in fulfilling what is suggested here. I want to know which steps are to be taken in addressing the challenges that we've already experienced on the current state-owned companies. If, for instance, we come up with an agency or a state-owned company that is going to deal with petroleum and gas, what steps are to be taken to overcome those challenges or experiences that we already have as members of the committee? If somebody is also working for the environment, protecting the environment, there may be any steps are to be taken if we see that our environment is at stake, is no longer protected. Are there any steps suggested in this proposal? What is to happen should that fail? And furthermore, we as the people, our local people, we see that this is a big project according to this bill. But when the time comes that this bill has to be implemented, we, the people who are local, are going to be sad land because there will be talks like experience and people who are... Who are people who are specialists on particular fields, we as the locals who are going to be ignored. So I really wish that this bill should make a provision for us as the locals to be protected. Thank you.
When you come here, please, because once I answer now, how will the state-owned company be handled? They will ask me, "Where did we discuss that?" We are here, just say, based on our experience of the state-owned companies, this bill must put this provision, for instance, that it must be compulsory, that the public must have access on the finances of that entity from time to... I'm just making an example. Then we write what you are proposing. Because now, if we dig an answer, two, if you say, "Experiences shown that many of these companies are responsible for pollution, put a particular penalty if they have deviated from environmental compliance", then you are giving us... We want your views, not us telling you about our views. We don't have views now until we discuss. If you say, "Put checks and balances on whether what..." Let's correct this, there's no project now. We can't go to... We are here. Then it will mean every area where we are going, there is a project. We still end up in Limpopo, there is no project even in Limpopo. It's a law that will manage if there is a project. So if you say now, just tell us, anyone who is coming, please, good people, tell us what you are thinking. No, wait, I'm chairing. Tell us what you are thinking and then we will write what you are thinking, not us. Continue.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Sandis Potwana. First, I just want to commend the committee. It looks very promising. More young people and more young faces I can see there. I'm also glad to see Mr. Zungula, Honorable Zungula, in that committee. I hope he will redirect his energy from that thing that I cannot mention to this bill. We are wishing that this is not a waste of time and a talk show when we are here, we are very serious and we are very clear. Mine is to wish the committee to look very close, this portfolio committee to look very close on the issue of rising of petrol. Because when the petrol rise, the food also rises and it affects directly the working class of which is us, especially Ababanga Tatin Dwin. Because when the petrol rise, the mode of transport that we are using to town, their price rises and the food also rises. So I want the committee to look very close on that thing. Also, Chair, I support the bill that is proposed by the department as I was looking very close to it on the basis that the main objectives like the local content as the development strategy to enable skills, development, local recruitment and national participation through supply of goods and services. I thank you for now, Chair. I'll come back.
Greetings to the delegation on the table at the panel and everybody present here. I'll be very short. I am Ndisim Kweeta from Ward Fifteen, the right location. I firstly want to say to the committee, thank you very much for the bill that you brought to us. I firstly want to say to the committee, thank you very much for the bill that you brought to us.
Kala benninge namu mja godwa. Omena mza, ndio wotasa, wotasa, wotasa. Wa twan kana, bamanpa kamenzoma.
Firstly, I must say that at the beginning I was not interested. But after you explained it to us and it became clear to me, that gave me interest to come up with my input.
Why this omapa kuba, ndiboni ndoba le ko meeting? Ifuna a new South Africa.
The reason why I'm here, I see that this committee wants to build a new South Africa.
Umbozo utu, utajanja, nomdo ba, kubiltu i South Africanja. Koko kuba, le i bill, sia kalu kufuma. And koba se kalu kufuma nja, kum, ilunga tolkulu.
Maybe you have a question, what do I mean by new South Africa? The reason for that is because this kind of a bill, to me, is something very new. And it raises some hopes to us.
Umnense, umdu, onga pangiliyo. Na kandi chonga kena gele bill. Isay, ya bulake akum, na bo ni ndoba, kusa chokye kuba ngonikani, baba ndeluxi.
There's a lot of unemployment that is taking place. But on listening this bill, this bill is giving hope that it will fight the big number of unemployment that takes place in the locations where we are staying.
Nalendo, le poison nesikuyo, yakala, go twenty oh eight. Yellow shedding, uzuchungoku. Na yo, kandi chonga le bill, isa osavenza kakulu pa.
And even the poison that we are experiencing now, that started from two thousand and eight of the load shedding. As I look on this bill, it seems to me it will also minimize this kind of load shedding that we're experiencing right now.
Ifindwe mbi kena kinto ba, koko echi am, ingati ndimte domta lafini. Nendesa wenge na kule bill, nendesa wa flya, nendesa wifuma nilaisen, ndena wka, seni wufu cha nukutu.
It's a pity that I, looking around, I see I'm the most elderly person in this room. And I can assure you that should the time be in my favor, I would have applied and get a license and take part in this kind of industry.
Mna kensha la panse, wukuti le bill, maikubekeke, andidi ma immaikubekeke. Kuba indi nika, ngapaya, gus.
As I sit down, I say this bill must be processed because it gives me a big hope. Thank you.
Okay, this is Bulsela Nam. Ikama, Mlungisikrotbon.
Greetings to everybody, my name is Mlungisikrotbon. And the representative of Solar and Energy. Solar and Energy.
I'm representing Solar and Energy.
Yeah. If, but basically mine is a number of things. The first one is that if we look at upstream, if we talk about upstream, virtually that area includes exploration, includes production, possibly storage, distribution and supply. Now, currently, all of these things happen. We have companies that are involved in exploration. We have companies that are actually involved in production of petroleum products. So if I look at, I must be honest, I didn't go through the bill. But I went through the objection, the objectives. And I also took notes of what you said, Mr. Chair. The Department of Minerals and Energy is suggesting should happen. So the first question which I will answer is, the landscape has all these activities. Is the bill seeking to regulate all these activities under one umbrella? That's the first question. And I think it is. The other, if that is, to me, if that is the case, my colleague from Solar and Energy spoke about turnaround time. And if, and I've also been involved in another capacity where I actually was quite frustrated with getting a license. And this was a retail license via the department, the D M R E. Which actually the experience was such that what is written on paper in terms of turnaround time is probably a dream. Because my experience was far longer than that. So having said that, I would support the regulation of these activities through this bill. However, my suggestion is that we need to decentralize, particularly when it comes to certification, in other words licenses. Let me give you my experience with this other license I was, I had applied for. I eventually did get it. So you applied because you are based in the Eastern Cape. You apply for your retail license in East London. So you get a reference in East London and the person who's handling, and you get the person who's handling actually your application. But you deal with that person, so they go through their screening processes. You deal with them and then they have to send the application to Pretoria. Now, when it gets to Pretoria, it will land with anyone. So I am unable to follow up on the progress on the application directly with Pretoria. Because I have to go through the person who's actually handling my application, who's based in East London. The person in East London is unable to get hold of the person in Pretoria and time is ticking. So you then have, you actually are driven to a point of frustration because you have absolutely no feedback. The feedback you get from East London is that I can't get hold of the person who's handling the issue in Pretoria. So my view is if these activities were, or these processes were decentralized, then it will cut out a lot of this red tape time that actually continues to frustrate somebody. If you look at the, what is in black and white on specifically the retail license, you are virtually given up to six months. I got my retail license twenty-four months later. So what I'm trying to say here is that much as I may support the bill and there will be different licensing requirements. If you want to explore, there's a certain license that you have to, you have to, you have to apply for. If you want to go into production, there's another license that you need to apply for. We need to find a way of, maybe decentralizing it without losing the authority at a national level. So that we can cut out on the red tape time. That's all.
I am Tandega Adams, I'm staying at Ward Forty-Four. At number Eighteen Quash Street. I want to know about these solars that it's being said, or it's rumored that they are going to deduct from the pension or the government grant that we are receiving. So for the solars that they installed to our houses, they are going to deduct the money for them from our grants. Is that true? Eh, sisa utataba lopral, lopramlu, uyahaamba. Eh, uzambambe, uzamtatela, nazeg. Nazindo uteti nyani, let's face it, uteti nyani. Koda ngonbu yas kupakaklen koba, lenkoza uchoyo, ingenzeka puti ipinde. Baya yas pemi nyangwenchale, nabuzi mastate, mining, application for exploration, right or permit. It turnaround time is fourteen days. God, we are was, we are paufigemi nyangwen, kusabemore than thousand applications, not processed. Ingago obinsiti mna, nobingabango two days, nobinga obani. Obani lisinu, there is a very decentralization. You know what is the problem? In that law, there is no consequences for failure to comply. I would love, um, those who are at the lesson, they get a turnaround time of eleven or fourteen days. Decentralization, yes, may we consider it. But say, failure to comply, what could be the consequences? Because namyaya sisheli, sheli apange. Eh, wengenasbe handitindu, ndanfangangetresetile, ndanfangangetresetile. But kau chongu mteeto. Au na yo, indo uchoyo ba, oba umetangu fourteen days, kusagwenze kandoni. So, this is a moment, this is my, ni kulega, ni express what has to happen. Based, based on your experience. There is only point there decentralization, lay uchoyo. But it doesn't mean if it is decentralized, it is uquense again. Let's take another round of hands. Yes, you see? Sisi lo na, number one, sisi lo one, number two. Utata apa, number three, uzachonga, just to the number three. Is there another hand? Number four, mama lo apa. Obufunupin, dasu swam. Sisi lo, obufunupin. Obufunupin. Oh. Okay.
I'm Arti John, I greet everyone in the house. I'm from Utenate. I'm from Greenlight Organization. I have a question. Will this bill protect the food that we use and the sea? We know that in Jeffreys Bay, there's a beach that is called. Aston Bay. Aston Bay. It is very smelly there. The company that's there in Jeffreys Bay, is Jeffreys Bay that is working there is the cause of this water that is coming there that is very smelly.
Very recently.
We lost so many fish, fishes in the sea. Because, because of the many companies in Jeffreys Bay who pollute the sea. Will this bill protect the food that we have in the sea?
Gus.
Thank you.
Good day, I'm Deanne Casper from Ward Thirty-One in Missionville. Okay, I've got two questions. I support this bill thoroughly. But I have got some questions which I'd like to raise. How is this amendment bill gonna be for the people that is living one with ADHD? Because science and mathematics are the most crucial things that is being questioned or thinking, which the South African law requires of us and we know that we have a burial there. Two, those kids, those people can't read, they can't write, so where are those people supposed to go to? Three, can the youth be prioritized in such an instance? Because we as the youth are the main focus of the South African place. As according to our law, our right, we are the people that is supposed to be protected. We are the people that is supposed to be moving things forward. We are the people that is supposed to get more and more enhancement of the nutrients that is being given to us. But our law doesn't give us a lot of things. And one of those things are, we suffer from unemployment, BBE and inequality. The BBE inequality is also named as one. So can we have a look into that once? Please, thank you.
My name is Bulseli, manwa naba onke.
I agree to you all, protocol observed. Especially from people, people from, poor people from Emchangeni.
Emchablangeni.
Emchablangeni. I support this bill. I am Zoli Lesolwali. I welcome this bill. With the hope that this bill will open job opportunities. I will ask the government to train our children. Especially those who have matriculated. Before nineteen ninety-four, we were oppressed. We must not forget that because us as black people, we're not given such opportunities. They must not take people who already had the opportunities and forget about those who didn't have the opportunities.
Maybe my wording of phrasing out my view was not clear enough. I am totally against state-owned entities when it comes to this gas and petroleum. Because my reasoning is, we have seen it, it has happened before, that everything that is state-owned is riddled with corruption. Should this also be our state-owned? I'm thinking it will have the same results. So I'm totally against it. Or if this bill passes, and it is welcome that they should be under state-owned, I'm thinking there should be a clause that says, if it's not doing well, maybe it's given a timeframe in a year or two or three years' time, then we'll privatize it, give it to private companies. Because we've seen what happens with the state-owned entities. And two, with the advancement of black people, we're saying that we want black people to have these jobs. We're saying we want black people under privilege and fully black people to advance. How then are we going to make sure? My view is, there should be a clause that says that, we've seen what happens with the BEE. People are made faces, poor black people are made faces for these companies that are going to show. Should this be really about the advancement of poor black people? There should be a clause that makes that it is really the black people that benefits from this legislation. Who are made faces. Everyone thinks that black people are advancing. Meanwhile, we are not, we're still staying in the same places.
Alright. Greetings to the House. I'm Tandwe Nondumo. I'm from what, twenty-seven? Um, in self-organization. In Zuidi. I support the bill, but I would like to request a few things. Please assist us concerning the water bill because we have water crisis here in Kabeja. People are losing faith on our organization because sometimes you pay a bill of twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, and people can't afford that. Please come closer to us and bring whatever that we need so that people can get the knowledge and understanding of what is happening concerning water in our area. I'm greeting the Parliament here in Kabeja. I'm Tawza Amakabanesa, I'm a committee member from March sixteen. I welcome the bill. It looks as if we want to repeat the same thing, government. And the issue is that our children are unemployed. I really think that this bill will assist us because they are qualified, they have degrees, but they're staying at home. Thank you. Greetings you to you all. I'm Bullelo Suka. I'm a committee member of what fifteen. I'm very much interested in clause thirty-one. But the reason that? When I look at the clause, I find black persons. I'm not too sure if someone under the umbrella of PDI? Or anyone who has a clear name. Please explain where, who is being referred to there? I'm just suggesting. I see ten percent interest. And fifty-one percent owned. I see fifty-one percent owned. And confused. I'm very confused. Because if, for example, it's two companies involved, whatever it may be called. Either two companies involved in this bill. Or ten percent is made up of ten ninety and fifty-one forty-nine. So I would also suggest that to be clarified or made easier to be understood. As black people, we don't, we are really clueless concerning this industry. We cannot really put in our views because we are not really sure what is it about. And therefore that reason, I would suggest that and low black person refers to this BEE? I don't know if this black person refers to BEE partnership. It is not clear. So also in the condition, I would suggest that because of not, because of the black nation not knowing anything about this industry, the other partner in the partnership that I'm suggesting, in the window dress, that would be catered for in the condition of the bill. It must not be window dressed. Make sure that you bring skills in the other partner so that it can be productive. Thank you.
At first, I was lost as to where do we fit in this bill because I am old. But I remembered also that our food is, the prices are high because of these. Another thing that made me lost is because here in Eastern Cape, we don't have these things. We don't have places where you can, we don't know of places where you can get petrol compared to at Johannesburg or Houghton. Another thing is here at the grave, there was a quarry. Yes, that was open and then it was closed. So we don't know what the government is thinking about those places because we can see that those places can produce employment, but now they are closed. So we want the government to look at those places. I am Ombaga's Befile, I am from what forty-two in Jozlovu. I welcome the bill, thank you. What I want to raise to the government is that here in Eastern Cape, we don't have institutions where our children can learn about petrol. We ask for the government to produce those institutions here in the Eastern Cape so that our children will not have to go to Johannesburg to get those institutions. Thank you. Greetings, I am Kuseli Chalo. I am from Utenhe. What I'm going to ask? There are animals as we are. There are animals that are supposed, we are supposed to protect and they can also protect us. What I ask as the community? It should not be people above, it should be us as the community members to make ways of how to protect those animals. Let's respect our animals because we are the closers. Because we live there, some of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greetings. I am Amanda. I am Amanda Pandle from what? Yes. Thank you for this opportunity. The chairperson said we must not ask, we should suggest what we want to be included in the bill. For instance, like in the transnet, it'll appear in the port in the petrol and gas, not to receive money, no capital as a town, as in Kabeja. Since South Africa will get a chance to produce petrol, I suggest that we should also have our own ports here in Wahu. No, I was making example when I say Ngucha, but we must have it here in Kabeja. We must have our own ports where we can produce the petrol. For example, in Ngucha or here in Port Elizabeth. As I've said that I did not read this bill because it has many pages, I just got it now. Please make sure that the business owners get at least thirty percent. I see here that you mentioned twenty percent. Can it please be increased to thirty percent? For black people. Here's another thing, there's a youth that is unemployed. We also have thirty-five years and above that is not considered. I plead for a training for those people and also it might, it must come closer to people and not be far from the people. Because when it comes to the petroleum and gas. And that training, it must also be regarded as an experience so that the people, when they are done with that training, they must, that training will be need, sorry. To be changed to an experience. When it comes to jobs. I also ask for women like me to be considered and also people with disabilities. Thank you.
Greetings everyone, greetings to the Parliament. I am Mandilake Dike from what fifty-three. Young people, I'm here standing as for unemployment. We have a huge unemployment, young people. We done our metric, then we sit in our homes, facing a challenging of, we have passed your metric, but you do not have any job, you do not have anything to come at home. So we have that big challenges. Our brothers and sisters end up using drugs also just because of they have nothing to do. Can that Parliament help us to solve this problem? Thank you.
That was, that was a beautiful rounding off. Yeah, and I've just requested an interpretation from my chair. And he indicated that apparently Parliament is very good to have been here and the doors are opened and. Now, we normally get this praise when the president is going to speak. So we are humbled to get it as well. So I will make sure that my colleague also get the interpretation of it. We are humbled and grateful for your presence, for your contributions. Most of the speakers interacted with the document. We will be considering these comments as we would be rounding off the other provinces. They will be cumulatively being discussed in our committees and it will be sent to the different houses for endorsement and or discussion. And definitely, some of the views that are reflected here would find expression in our discussions. So your participation must not be considered as a futile exercise. It is a necessary exercise in our democracy. And on that note, we have come to the conclusion of this session. And with the powers borrowed from the chair, I declare the meeting closed. Save for a quick announcement that the chair would want to make.
No, no, no. You can add a boss at parliament.gov.za. A boss at parliament.gov.za or A-KOTZ at parliament.gov.za. That's A-KOTZ. In that sentence, the following sentence, same sentence, following sentence, would take a definition. Would it define it, it, black people in the company, a owner fifty-one percent by black people. So fifty-one percent, your ownership. With ten percent is entitlement to trade. Thank you very much. My court chair here had closed the meeting. So you can write, that's the point I was explaining. If now you are more enlightened, use this opportunity because we are still going to other provinces. From here, obviously, we are going back to Cape Town for the city. The weekend, the following weekend, the coming weekend will be in Guazulu-Natal for the whole weekend. From Guazulu-Natal, we will be going to the Northern Cape, Northern Cape, Limpoopo, up until the last province. We hope to finish around early May or late April. We hope we will have traveled all the provinces, start the work of working on the bill. So it will be okay that you at least have got a month or so to think through the document. If you want to do it, please, we request, put it clause by clause, that on clause so and so, chapter so and so. This is our, this is the view that I'm having. It helps now that for recording purposes, we quote you exactly according to what you have said on the clauses rather than to think what you would have wanted to say. There's only one announcement I don't do, they will tell you those who do it. Thank you very much. Be safe and leave us alone.
He is moving around and he is touching me and saying I should pass his regards to kids later, but I do not identify with the letter 's'.
I have talked to Loang, he has very good language. He is telling me action, of course to Loang, he will call my name and ask why. Tell me, Loang, come up, you go, oh, man. Why, is this a Chinese family? Okay. Let me start here. There are certain things that to erase if we had what happened. If Opa may say he can't handle it, or don't do, then you probably have no knowledge of this. It's unconscious. Ogo was a friend, who should call him to work. He was trying to see job, but he was not able to. But, they would get this, as in confidence, because something. As we talk about this, something. We did a survey, we did a survey, he said he will come back. Or, he said he saw, eh, companion, he report. He was so young, he was not aware of the job, he was not mature. You know, he says he could have, he could have taken it. But, he was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could receive it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it. He was not sure if he could take it.
So, he asked me.
And this.
Yeah.
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 Life, we have to respect.
Yes.
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 Yes.